Come to order, would you all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a guest tonight, Brian, would you like to introduce Josh, please?
I would love to. My mics are on, thank you, Mr. Chair. Grabbed most of you on the way in, but for those that just came in, I'd like to introduce Josh Penn. Josh is a newer hire to the firm and has been assisting me with some GROZIL work for the last couple of months. I dragged him into the rec plan work and he helped me with the public workshop. He's been helping me prepare that draft for your rec commission. And then more recently, I've had him working on some of the site plans that are coming through the township. So, really glad to have him aboard and I know he'll do some really good work and wanted to make sure you all had a chance to meet him here tonight and hopefully a familiar face that you'll see more frequently.
Very good, always like a fresh face. Welcome, Josh.
Especially when you're used to mine.
I was not going to say that. Anybody have any additions and/or deletions to the agenda? If not, I would then have a motion to approve the agenda as submitted.
So moved.
Motion from Brian, support from Eric. Eric, call a question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Carry, the agenda stands. The next item is the review of the minutes from September 21. Did anybody have any questions or comments on those minutes? Seeing no hands, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes from September 21 as presented.
So moved.
Motion from Eric.
Support.
Support from Jay, call a question, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Lori's not with us here tonight, but Brian, again, relay our thanks for good work. Next item is public comment. Anybody who would like to speak with the commission about any item not on the agenda? Seeing no hands, we'll move on. To the annual election of officers, basically the Chair, the Vice Chair, and the Secretary. The elections in terms of the planning commission officers are regulated in the zoning ordinance and in the planning commission bylaws, specifically Section 24.3B of the zoning ordinance entitled Planning Commission in Operation specifies that the planning commission will elect the Chair, Vice Chair, and Secretary for terms of one year. And it also specifies how by voice vote they will be elected. We will handle the election in three steps. The first, we'll talk, we'll deal with the Chair position, second, then the Vice Chair, third, the Secretary. I will describe the positions, entertain motions, follow me to discussion, and a vote for each position, and I'll just kind of step right through one to the other. And should there be any differences, you know, with multiple candidates, I will entertain a motion for unanimous support for whoever the winning candidate is. Anybody have any questions on that? Okay, then let's go to the Chair. As Chair, facilitate meetings, set the agenda with the Planner, provide procedural guidance to applicants in conceptual review meetings, and provide directions to staff as needed. That's the duties of the Chair. I would entertain a motion, please, for position of Chair.
That we maintain John Schweickert's leadership in the Chairman position.
Support.
We have a motion in support. Are there any candidates? If none, I'll call the question. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much, appreciate your support. Will now move to Vice Chair. The Vice Chair positions are the same as those of the Chair. In the event that Chair is not available, the Vice Chair would take over and perform those duties. I would entertain motions for Vice Chair. I'll make a motion that Jay continue as Vice Chair. Is there support?
Support.
Support from Steve. Any other candidates? Call a question, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Congratulations, sir.
Well, thank you.
I'm glad you're here.
I'm more glad you're here.
Okay. Now move to the position of Secretary. The Secretary function validates the minutes prepared by the staff and provides the legal signature for the planning commission for township records. I would entertain a motion, please, for Secretary. I make a motion to continue Steve Lemoine as our Secretary.
Support.
Support from Brian. Any other candidates? Call a question, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Congratulations, Steve, and I'm glad you were here on my left.
Thank you, sir.
I appreciate your contribution. Okay, we'll move to the next item on the agenda, which is the site plan review for This is, this site plan is for a new Macomb Street office slash residential structure. The applicant is Mark, Mr. Mark Stanko, 4425 13th Street in Wyandotte. The location legally is Lot 13 of the east side of Horace Gray subdivision. The common description is 7968 Macomb Street, which is a vacant property on the north side of Macomb, about 100 feet west of the Macomb lines intersection. The proposal is construct a new building that will serve both as an office and as showroom for plumbing supplies on the first floor, and on the upper floors, there would be a residence. The building architecture is unique in that it will give the appearance of being an old style down river firehouse. The zoning in this application is Macomb Street District MSD. The articles of reference in the zoning ordinance are Article 7, Macomb Street District, and Article 21, Site Plan Review. The process is a two-step process, pre-application before the planning commission, which happened back in May of 2015, okay? And tonight, a final planning commission review and decision. So as I said, we're at step two tonight, and I would expect that the planning commission will vote on this application tonight. Mr. Stank, or, Brian, please lead us off.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Let me just walk through this real quickly. Make sure mics are on, beautiful. Right. Subject site, you've already referenced 7968 Macomb. It's this vacant parcel here on the north side, kind of middle of your screen on that aerial photo. Petitioners before you for site plan review tonight, as you've already referenced, they've been through pre-application conference. Site is zoned MSD Macomb Street. I think I'm just repeating exactly what you already introduced, so let me just jump right in. In terms of the applicable ordinance sections, there's really only a couple of things we're dealing with in this particular instance, and my computer just decided to not work. There we go. Thank you. Article 7 regulates the Macomb Street District, and Section 7.2 in particular identifies the permitted uses within the district. It does identify the office slash workshop item, as well as the upper floor residence, as uses that are permitted by right. So, in fact, this is just a straight site plan coming before you, no need for special land use approval or anything like that. So subsequent to it being a permitted use, Article 21 lays out the process and requirements for full site plan review. Because this is a brand-new, non-residential building, at least it's not fully residential, it does require planning commission review and approval as a site plan under Article 21. So this next slide is a look at the site plan as proposed. So this is Macomb Street at the bottom of the slide. This is the proposed building. This is the drive, the parking area in here. These are the overhead doors facing off to the side. And as you may recall from pre-application conference, there was an optional detached building that was shown. As of this time, they have chosen to pursue that, at least as part of this site plan review. The project architect and the owner are in attendance here this evening, so they may be able to take any questions you may have on that. But at least for the purposes of site plan review, there was discussion that they might not build it all at once, but they did want to put this into their plan such that we were sure everyone was on the same page. And if site plan was approved, then ultimately they would have at least some rights and some opportunities to build that structure if and when they are prepared to do so. There are some new landscaping proposed, so we have some new greenbelt trees, we have some new parking lot screening, we have some new buffer trees. And then one of the items I'm going to get to on my closing slide, there are, there's two large rows of existing arborvitae along the north and the east side of the property. Your ordinance requires buffer zones within these areas. And one of the items that's really up for discussion tonight, one of the few, quite frankly, the petitioner's done a really nice job of addressing all of our comments, but one of the few items up for discussion will be their request of the commission to modify these required buffer zones such that they can retain this existing landscaping as opposed to removing it and installing new in place of it. So we can touch more on that, too, if needed. So let me move on. Here is a look, the proposed building. So the upper right is the Macomb Street view, so that's the front face of the building. Lower left is the east side of the building. You can see, I mentioned the overhead door here, and then here's the main building entrance off to the side here, which now connects to a sidewalk that actually accesses out to the public sidewalk on Macomb Street. Upper left is a view of the accessory building, and then upper right is the rear side view or the north side elevation of the building. And then lastly, the lower left is a view from the opposite side, the west side building elevation. And of course, I can go back to these at any time. So in total, the main building that's proposed, I'd say it's approximately 4,200 square feet, that first floor and second floor. It is a mixed-use building with, again, the idea of an office slash showroom on the first floor. The residents above, the residents would be occupied by the owner of the office slash showroom. And then the addition of the 855 square foot accessory building, again, which was confirmed with this most recent site plan submittal, as previously introduced to you as a pre-application matter. In the time since, one of the things I wanted to point out, because it has been a bit of time, we're not used to things waiting almost a year to come back before us, but there were some issues, and I'm not going to go into any depth because it's not my place, but the property owner did kind of have to look for and find a new project architect to work on this. So the architect that presented to you last spring is different than the architect that has put forth the most current plan. So there were some changes in the overall teaming, and they had a few other things to kind of work out that they were playing around with. So anyway, it did take a little bit of time, but the end result is that they've addressed the vast majority of the comments and concerns that we raised, as well as the ones that the commission raised at that pre-application conference. You may also recall, one of those items then was the drive aisle, the internal circulation, because we had a slightly narrow aisle, and we had essentially a dead end around to the loading area, to the overhead doors. That's been resolved. The Fire Marshal did review those plans, and he did sign off on the circulation pattern. So in terms of the driveway and their ability to get into the site and get out of the site, they were satisfied. So that was a positive step forward. We also had township engineer review the initial drawings. They did not issue a formal approval. That's in large part because a lot of the engineering detail just hasn't been done yet. We typically have a little bit of engineering that comes forth through planning commission, and then if you approve it, one of your conditions will be final engineering approval, so that when they get into the real details of the utilities, additional site grading, stormwater management, all of those items, then the engineer will review that at the time of permits. And I did speak with him directly, because by not issuing an approval, I wanted to make sure you weren't going to approve something that's going to change dramatically, and their response back was, nothing they'll come up with is going to alter building placement, parking placement, design issues. It can all be addressed at grade or below grade. So I felt pretty confident with those issues to bring this forward to you tonight. My next point is really just that the majority of the issues that have been brought up have been addressed. Dimensional standards are met, park standards are met, they've addressed their ability to occupy a loading space within some of the sort of standing area by the overhead doors. They are going to take care of their own trash removal. This isn't the type of facility that's going to generate a lot, so the need for a waste receptacle was at least discussed at pre-app, but I think we all agreed that it was probably unnecessary for the intensity of this use. All of those items have been addressed. Additionally, I think, per my letter and per our conversation, the building as proposed and some of the site design features, I do think are really what we were looking for and a lot of what was intended by some of the regulations and provisions of the Macomb Street design standards. We do have a building with a presence. It's not just a low-level building, we've got some height to it. While it's not at the front lot line, it is strongly pushed towards the front lot line. We're not dealing with any parking in a front yard. We have pedestrian connection to the main public sidewalk. I really think it hit on a number of the elements that your ordinance really was intended for us to ultimately see along Macomb Street. That being said, I have just a few items that, again, are the discussion items for tonight. One would be, I already referenced, the applicants requested modifications to the north and east buffer zones. The details of that are in my letter. I also requested of the architect a spec sheet for their proposed light fixtures. I did actually get a copy of that today. Their decorative wall sconces, there aren't that many of them. There's not going to be an issue with the light intensity in terms of foot candles, but I wanted to see a spec, and I wanted you all to have that so that it becomes part of the file, so we know exactly what it is they're proposing. And when they get out there and actually build, there's not a guessing game going on as to what those fixtures are supposed to look like. So I feel pretty comfortable with that. I did ask at the pre-app, and then in the subsequent review letters, I did ask the petitioner to bring you a material color sample board so that you could have, again, better feel. Even a color rendering would be beneficial. These renderings, actually have, I have the electronics set in here, but they're really dark, don't come through all that clearly. So I did ask petitioner to bring you those samples so that you could see exactly what we're getting into here tonight. And then my closing point is simply that if you're going to consider action tonight, favorable action, that is, I would just ask that you tie it to engineer, fire, and ultimately county approval and/or issuance of necessary permits, as well, such that we kind of complete that circle and make sure that site plan is tied to the remaining approvals that are needed. We did receive, end of last week, or even just today, Lori got a copy of a letter from Wayne County. They have received the plans, they've reviewed the plans, but they've not issued a formal approval on anything yet. They just provided some comments and outlined the permitting process, so the petitioner knows kind of what their next steps are. Because this would be a new driveway on Macomb Street, they will have to get a permit from Wayne County in order to do any work in the right-of-way up to and including that new driveway. So that'll be something that has to be done anyway, but we've at least had some communication from Wayne County to that end. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Very good, nice presentation. Before we get to the applicant, does anybody have any questions for Brian?
Real, very quickly, you mentioned the accessory building?
Yes.
As being part of that. I should know the answer to this, but if we were to approve that today, is there an issue with it expiring after a reasonably short period of time if they don't construct that?
Much like the main building, they have a 12-month window to pull permits after site plan approval. They also have the opportunity to come in and request extension, which we've seen in a few instances over the last couple of years as well. So it would all be tied together in one plan. If they find nine months from now that they're not going to build it within that 12-month timeline, it would probably be an opportune time to come and talk to us, maybe make a formal request for extension of that particular item, and then we can always bring that back to your attention as we've done in the past. But yeah, it would be tied to the whole site plan, which is a 12-month time.
I just wanted to make sure, it sounded like you were talking about it being a potentially down road sort of thing, and I was afraid they might run into a...
That's the way it was originally presented. That was why I kind of brought that up, is that they felt that, at least, and again, I don't want to speak for them, but I think they felt as though they did want to pursue it, so they did include that into this version of the site plan.
Brian, was there any additional drawings submitted of the accessory building? Because it's supposed to follow the same requirements as the principal building.
We just have, yeah...
I saw a couple glimpses in these renderings in the front cover.
Yeah.
A couple glimpses of it. But, you know, it appears to me that we're going to be approving that site, or that's up for approval.
Let me see if there was anything else in this full packet, and I may have to defer to Mr. Bull and Mr. Stanko, just if we have anything else. With me for two seconds. Let me just, is it in this packet, Rick, or do you remember if it was in this one? Because if it is, I can just show it. Okay. If not, we can, we'll put those on overhead when Mr. Bull comes up, so we can see those. And then we'll make sure, again, pending, I don't want to lead you guys down a path, but pending your decision at that point, we'll make sure that we get those included and submitted as part of the full file moving forward. Yeah, the material I had unfortunately just has that one, just that one view. It's a great point.
Isn't that view under the second floor, I guess, patio area or deck here?
Oh, I see what you're saying.
It's under the porch as opposed to the accessory building?
Gotcha, gotcha. I'm sorry. I thought, just by looking at it, I thought that was the accessory. I didn't zoom in enough on it. All right. We'll look to Mr. Bull to present you, make sure we've got that. Yeah, it's just the parcels on that cover sheet then, that was it.
Additional questions? Brian?
Yeah, just one more question about process. First of all, I say, you know, great job with the presentation, Brian. I'm really excited about like what this project has been turning into. But I was just wondering, based on the conversation at driveways, I know that from an access management standpoint, especially in a walkable downtown area, you try to limit the number of driveways. Is there, was there any thought about shared access when we're going through the pre-application or anything like that? Do we have anything as far as to try and encourage that?
I think the only issue with this site is it's adjacent to two residences, so I think it would be really difficult to have pulled that off. I'm not sure that either neighbor would want additional traffic going through their personal residential driveway. I don't know if those are owner-occupied or not structures, but yeah, in this particular instance, I think that would have been tough to have pulled off. If we had adjacent commercial uses, then absolutely, I think that there would have been a real viable opportunity for something like that.
Okay, thank you.
Steve?
Thank you. Just one more point of clarification, since it's all tied together. This document that you outlined, is this just for the main building? Or it doesn't matter if that accessory building was here or not, this applies to the entire location?
Well, the site plan review is for the full site, and it was the petitioner's intent to include the accessory building as part of this site plan review.
So when you did this review, it was with both buildings in mind?
Correct. That's correct. Yep. I think what was lacking, I think is what Commissioner Boggs brought up, and that was within the most recent packet submittal, was the elevation views of that accessory building, which we'll put on overhead as soon as...
All right, I mean, because again, as I look at numbers 1, 2, 3, and go through like the lighting and all the stuff, it seems to reference the main structure only. That's why I just wanted to make sure. So I would assume that there would be no exterior lighting on the...
If it is, it's just going to be wall mounts, and I would assume it's going to be the same exact fixture, but we'll find out from the architect.
I get nervous assuming things when nine months down the road it's constructed and...
Well, they, if your concern is they're going to put up floodlights or something to that effect, then, you know, we have ordinance regulations against those things. So I want us to all be on the same page tonight, which is why I'd like to hear what they have to say. I don't want you guys to have any surprises, but if there was a nasty surprise, we got a strobe light, a spotlight, something like that, we'd issue a violation and force them to crack a tip. But I know what you're saying.
Disco balls, okay.
Yes, preferable.
Brian, procedurally, if the applicant, for example, chooses not to, if this plan were submitted as the drawings are with the main building, okay, and there was nothing on here about the accessory building, and two years down the road, he wants to build an accessory building, what would be the review process for that accessory building? Would it come in front of this commission, or would it be staff?
It probably would be an administrative review at that point, but that would be one where we probably would, we'd have to put our heads together. We'd probably confer with you and the officers of the commission to see what you felt the best process was. Because of there's a residential component to this site, if it's a compliant accessory building that's intended for use by the residential component, it's not anything that we ever need to bring to planning commission, but because there's a commercial component to this site as well, that might trigger the need for additional site plan review.
Okay, so it is important for this commission to understand about that accessory building?
Sure.
Understood, thank you. Okay, any other questions for Brian at this point? Well, thank you, Brian, good job.
Thanks.
Mr. Stanko, welcome to the planning commission. Stand up and introduce yourself and your architect, and tell us about your plan.
Probably great if we could see the rendering portion.
Yeah, that would be, that would...
It's ultimately what we're looking at, need to look at.
My name is Tom Stanko, I'm Mark's dad, and I'm here representing him tonight.
Oh, welcome.
Okay, thank you.
And I'm Rick Bull, I'm the project architect on the project 2972 Big View GROZIL.
Welcome to you too, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, tell us about your plan, that, any comments on what Brian has talked about?
I think he did a pretty good job.
Okay, well, I'll tell you what then, let's focus on that accessory building. Show us what that looks like, and show us the materials, and let's see what the big picture is.
Let's start with this.
Whoops.
This is a color rendering of the whole site, including the accessory building, that's looking basically down the driveway. Macomb Street down here, this is the sidewalk in front, this is the accessory building. First floor is the retail space, second floor is the residence, and accessory building that's in the back of the property.
The accessory building is to support the business, I presume?
Actually, you want to describe it?
It's just because it was permitted, and when we found out it was permitted, we thought we might as well go ahead with it, and we are going to build it right away. It's going to be done with the main building.
Okay.
And if we look at the plan of that building, this is, north is up, so Macomb Street is down here. Building itself is 38 by 25. Door here, and then, oh, that's, I'm sorry, that's an outdoor fireplace for the patio This is a view, looking at it from, looking towards northeast. Driveway coming in, Macomb Street is out here. This view is a combination siding and stone. Still going back and forth on what the exact material is going to be, whether we're going to substitute brick for the hardy board siding. So that still is a bit up in the air, but the style of the building is...
Brian, are there any ordinance restrictions, one versus the other?
No, not necessarily. I mean, we're in Macomb Street, so my biggest thing would be I want to make sure that it's going to be compatible with the principal building. Hardy plank is typically an allowable siding material. It's not like a vinyl or aluminum siding. It has a little bit, what is it, it's the concrete fiber cement?
Fiber cement siding.
Yeah. I'm looking at Dan, Dan can probably explain it better than I can, but at least it's a little bit, it's a little bit better siding. The, and obviously, you know, as much, as much brick, whether it's accent or primary material, to match the principal building, I think to me that would be the critical component. It's not going to have the same presence on Macomb Street that the principal building will have, but we definitely want to make sure that it blends in as harmonious with the site, to use a nice fluffy word for you.
And it is one of the materials that we're using on the principal structure. The mezzanine area is clad in siding. So... Sample.
For example.
That's a sample of the potential brick that we're looking at, and then this is the hardy plank siding. I don't think we've chosen the shingles yet, but.
Not yet.
I'm going one way.
Okay. Gotcha.
Gotcha. So I guess I'll jump in here with a question.
Okay, yeah, there, there is nobody in the, in the audience, so no public comment on this, so we'll come to the commission. Steve, I'll start with you.
Well, Mr. Chair, you'll have to direct me if I'm just thinking wrong, but I'm struggling with approving an accessory building, and I'm not really clear on what it's going to be used for. And usually, when we get a lot of discussions about accessory buildings, we're hearing very clear, precise, this is what the use will be, this, 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 you know. Struggle with that, so I don't know if I should not be worried about that, or if there should be more discussion on exactly what's going to take place in this. I mean, it could be a slaughterhouse for cattle, all we know.
Well, what is it going to be? What, what are you going to use that building for?
It could be slash for either one, for the residence or for the business.
Like, are you thinking in terms like storage of parts or?
Storage.
Storage of furniture? Is there any other use for it? You're not having any bathroom facilities in there, or any of that?
No.
Okay.
It's a big open room?
So it's just?
A big open room.
Okay, a big open room, and it's, then it would be used by the business to store parts or supplies or whatever?
Slash the homeowner.
Okay, or the homeowner needing space, like his garage, basically, a place to put stuff in his attic.
You never can have enough space.
Okay. And the fireplace on the side?
This was a thought for, with a patio back there for, for my son and his wife.
Okay, so there'll be a patio area just off the, that area around the fireplace?
Around the fireplace.
Anything else for that building?
No.
Okay.
There's, there's no basement.
No basement.
I don't want to speak for you, but if there's no basement, you got to put your stuff somewhere, right? So that's kind of going to be the storage, I'm assuming.
Yes.
Normally put stuff in your basement.
Okay. Other thoughts on that, Steve?
No, it just seems to be very limited discussion on that.
Yeah, you're right.
Or being asked to approve it.
We've, we typically would see the same exact level of detail as, as the main building. Yeah, you're right there. Jim, your thoughts?
We spoke about this a year ago, so not much had changed. Obviously, we didn't talk about the additional structure, but I know we had mentioned it. So I'm fine with the, the, the structure. And, you know, I'm probably fine, I'm fine with the, the, the other structure, I guess, as well. So, no further comments.
Okay. Eric, Eric, please.
Yeah, no, thanks for the, the presentation. I think that it's hard to remember exactly what we had addressed about a year ago with the, the pre-site conference that we had, but it looks like pretty much everything we've, we, we needed answered is answered. I don't see any ongoing issues. As far as the buffer zone, the minor modifications, I, I don't really see any, any issues making those modifications. Regarding the accessory building, yeah, obviously, we'd like a little more detail on it. If this was a straight residential area, right, the 900 square foot detached accessory building would be, would be within, within the right. So the, the architecture matches the building, as long as the materials relatively match the building, fine with it. The last business that we approved that I can remember that had an accessory building was the, the dual shop, right, the hardware, hardware and equipment rental, and they've got a detached accessory building that's used primarily for storage. So, you know, I, I actually would encourage that there would be a building so we don't have to have equipment, you know, if there's plumbing equipment left out, if stored outside, I'd rather have that stored inside anyway. So overall, I'm, I'm, I'm fine with the applicant as it is, or application as it is.
Thank you, Eric. Dan?
My, my only concern before was about the principal building, but, and basically, the McCombe Street District allows almost anything except for industrial, industrial. So I just wanted to make sure that, that accessory building matched the principal building, and didn't have any, you know, later on, you know, nine months down the line if it was built, it looks like, you know, a pole barn out there and has an industrial look. So that was my only concern regarding that. As far as the look of the building, I, I like the look of the building, and I think it'll be a nice addition to that district. Just one other area of concern that, that I noticed was the buffer zone B, or the back of the property that borders residential behind it. There really isn't much of what is required there. What's proposed is very limited compared to what's actually required. And right now, there is no, there is, there is no homes back there, but one day, someone could build a home, and it'd be nice to have some kind of buffer or separation between that residence and this business. It is a business and a residence, but there'll be a lot more activity there than, than your typical residential home.
Brian, could we show that, please, on the screen again, the backs, the backside of that property? The view showing the, the overview on the backside? Do we know specifically?
So it's the north buffer zone, right here. They do meet the width requirement. There are a number of existing arborvitae they're proposing to keep. I actually had, the last review I did, I noted one canopy tree. It looks like we're up to four, and I don't believe, I think part of the request was to not do the berm or the wall.
That's correct. We're asking for two, we're asking for the planning commission to use the latitude that I believe they got in the ordinance to allow us to leave the existing arborvitae along the north property line in lieu of a berm or a wall.
Brian, on your, you had the overview of the property. Put that up for the group, and let's, let's show exactly what's there.
Yeah, it doesn't show well, and in fact, I think this may even predate when those were planted.
Small to see.
Yeah.
Can we go back to this? I've got some photos of actually the. Zoom in. I'm not sure how well you can see it, but this is a photo of the existing arborvitae that are along the rear property line. Not sure when they were planted, but they're pretty well established. They're eight feet plus. You can see there's eight, it's eight feet, so.
There's a green fence there, basically, right now, and that's going to stay. You're going to supplement, you're going to submit that with how many trees? Three trees? Four trees?
Yeah. Well, let me show you. One, two, three, four, five trees.
Five trees.
And then there is an existing row of arborvitae that is along the east property line, that are about the same size, and I assume were planted about the same time because there's.
I, I like that there is additional trees there. I was looking at the original, the, the plan review here, and I noted one tree, and I noticed that, that all, that none of those trees were noted, so I wasn't sure if they're in there or not, but, but they are shown, and if they're going to be, if they plan on providing those, that would be great. I really don't have a concern about the fence. I think the arborvitae does a great job of creating a natural operation as opposed to, to a fence. And there's basic trees every location except for where the building is, and obviously, the building itself will provide screening for that portion. So I, I don't, I, I wouldn't see the need to provide the additional fence or the shrub to have here.
Thank you, Dan. Brian?
My fellow commissioners have done a great job summing it up. I'll just say again that I really like the design of this project. I think it fits well in the McCombe Street District. Thank you.
Jay?
Yeah, I, I just want to add, I, I think this is an extremely, you know, great looking addition to McCombe Street. I'm, I'm really excited to see it built. Obviously, the concern that we have is always the translation of the drawings to the, to the construction, and we've seen some of those go, you know, where the, the construction looks better than the drawings, and, and others where it doesn't, frankly. And so that's, you know, that's probably as big a concern as I have, especially with the accessory structure with a little bit of, we haven't really decided yet, sort of status for it. So, you know, I would kind of look to, to our planner, Brian, and team to, to make sure that that gets translated, you know, appropriately from the drawings to the, to the actual construction. But as far as these drawings go, I think this will be the kind of building we're all proud to see and say we had a role, even if, even if our role is only to, to say yes. And, and, you know, looking at the accessory structure, you know, I think it is a little unorthodox to have, you know, a little bit of information on it. Having said that, I think even if we added the 800 or so square feet for that, we're still well under 50% limitation outlined in Brian's letter. So, you know, they could have tacked it on the building, just made it a big massive structure, and, you know, I think this adds a nice little capstone at the end of the driveway there. So I think as far as visual, the way the drawings look, I think it looks great. As far as the buffers are concerned, I think I agree with everybody that, you know, the, the green buffer, the green fence should be sufficient for everything we're looking for here. I just want to clarify, it is MSD zoning behind, correct?
I think it's residential.
I think it's MSD. Gray's Drive, think.
There are, there are different parts. The fact that I called it out as a, as a B, I believe it's, I believe it's zone residential.
There's just three, three lots there by themselves that are residential.
Yeah.
Because I verified it on the map.
Okay.
Most, most of it is, or a lot of it, is, is MSD, but the portion's residential there.
Yeah, if it were, just to clarify, and that was, I'm just kind of using logic here, but MSD adjacent to MSD requires buffer zone C, so that, yeah, that, that's definitely zoned, single family to the north.
What would buffer zone C look like?
Buffer zone C is less restrictive, so it's a, it's a narrower depth or width and requires fewer plantings. Buffer zone B, where it gets a little bit wider, we require the berm or the wall and require more plantings than a C.
Okay. Right, I mean, I still think, you know, I, you know, thinking of it from my standpoint, if I were, you know, going to build on that house, on that lot behind, I'd probably look at, rather look at a row of trees than, you know, an eight-foot wall. You know, if we were talking about planning brand new, then I might say, I'd rather have the wall, but an established fence is probably preferable in my mind.
Brian, is there, on something where a green fence like this is part of a site plan, is it a requirement that it be maintained so that if an arborvitae dies or two, that it gets replaced?
Yep. I would view these as though this is the approved landscape plan for the site, so the maintenance provisions of Article 13 would kick in. So even on an existing tree, if something were, if we were to get a disease, or if something were to get damaged, or even just one or two of them die off, they should be replaced to, to at a minimum, meet the contents of this landscape plan.
Okay.
Steve? Just one more point of clarification, because a lot of discussion on existing shrubbery. I'm assuming this is on the lot for the applicant, so the neighbor to the right or left can't take these things down?
Correct.
All right, I just wanted to validate that.
Yes.
This is on your property.
Good point.
I've heard that at all, that it is, to validate, but just want to make sure.
Okay. My comments on this, I think this is the way the planning process is supposed to go. You know, you came to us, you asked our thoughts, you gave us a good initial plan, we gave you a lot of input, you listened to that input, and you fed back what I think is an excellent plan. So I support. As far as a motion, I think that, Brian, you mentioned that we need contingent upon engineering, fire, and Wayne County approval?
Yep.
Is one. We have the two buffer zone exceptions, for buffer zone C and buffer, buffer zone B exceptions that noted in your, in your summary. And I think that was all that, that was required in this plan. Is that correct, or was there something else?
Correct.
You've got the lighting already.
The lighting we, we did get, I, I do think that, you know, we're at a point now where I do think we need some, some confirmation on that accessory building in terms of the less rendering that was showing up there, if that's the, you know, if that's the intent. I guess I, I just want to be clear, because again, this is one of those, and I, you know, Commissioner Lamoy started to get it. I don't want you guys to think you're approving something and then have something different get built.
Okay, well, how would you like that, that portion?
I think, I think I'd like to, to hear from the petitioner, too. I mean, we've seen basically the same building style. I think we're all okay with that. But I see a rendering right now that, to me, unless the, unless the hardy plank is the color of brick, I'm assuming that render, this rendering is basically a brick building. The other rendering was predominantly siding building. I guess it would just be nice to know which one we're.
I guess, Tom, is it fair to say that we like the latitude, either use brick or hardy plank siding? Because those are two materials that we've, we've been going back and forth on. And frankly, it's a question of price. In my mind, either, either material would be an acceptable material in that building. We're using materials that are on the main building, either brick or siding, so whether you've got the latitude to approve that or not.
Mr. Bull, I, I think you mentioned maybe stone around the doorway? Is that?
Yeah. This area is stone with brick accent. The only area really in question are the sidewalls and the end walls.
The plan is to do the stone either way, it's just a matter of whether it's brick accented or hardwood accented. Is there stone on the principal building?
Uh, there's not.
I guess, Mr. Chair, just to chime in real quickly, it would just, I feel like I'd rather have you all know what you're approving here tonight, and if it's your intent to, to request the approval for the building that's on the screen now, you could always come back and modify that building if you wanted to change it to a brick building. It is simply an administrative process if you want to change the materials on the approved building. So maybe that's a reasonable approach if the commission's comfortable with that.
I, I, I agree with Steve. I think we ought to, you know, we ought to approve what we see, okay? And if it changes from that, then, then it comes back administratively through you. If there's any dispute past that, it comes back to us, but I don't see that happening. But I think that that would, that would narrow the, narrow the differences here. How does that sound to you? Opinion on that?
Let me see if I understand what, what you said, is that it's your intent to approve the building with the rendering as it's shown here?
Correct.
And in the event that there's a material change, it goes back to the staff?
It goes to staff, it would go to Brian for final approval. You would not have to come back here.
That's reasonable.
And, Mr. Chair, I mean, I think the reality is a change from a mostly sided building to an entirely brick building, is probably not something that anybody's going to have too much issue with, so.
No, I think not, but it's a matter of, it's a matter of process.
Again, I think, I think it's correct. It is, it is a matter of being on the same page tonight, and again, I don't want, I don't want anybody to feel like something got built that wasn't approved, or something got approved that wasn't built properly, so.
Okay, so that, that we will add, and, you know, this is the, the version that we're approving, is the rendering on the, on the accessory building, and that as a condition in the, in the motion, or maybe it is even necessary because it's, it's part of the ordinance.
Part of the ordinance.
Minor site change. Okay. All right, so then, we're only talking about final approval of Wayne County Fire and Engineering and the two bar zone modifications.
Exactly.
Got it. All right.
Another question, just to make sure I understand what it is we're approving on the accessory structure here. So there's stone on the fireplace, the same stone around the doorway, the entranceway, with a brick accent that would match the brick on the?
On the main building.
On the main building. And roof, similar to the?
The same shingles, we just haven't selected the shingles yet.
Okay.
Dan, comments?
Yes, one other comment is, I understand that the connection with the shingles, I'm sorry, with the siding, because there's siding on the principal building, just, you know, materials are supposed to match or somewhat relate, and I just kind of questioning, you know, utilizing this, producing a new material, the stone material, and not utilizing brick in, in its location to better match the building.
I'm not sure I've got a good, solid answer for that. It was more just a question of what the owner was interested in. Mark was, felt comfortable with the stone.
Right. I think, I think fire is, you know, if you switch the stone, I'm sorry, yeah, switch the stone to brick, you're really in the same category, but it would definitely much better relate to the principal building.
The stone is, it's another material that's not used on the, on the principal building, I'll admit that. How do you feel about that?
Hate to speak for Mark on that one, because he was pretty excited about the.
He was excited about the stone, yeah, that was his idea.
He's been collecting limestone that matches the church on East River and Church Road.
St. Anne's Chapel?
Yeah, and the entrance would match a chapel. So that one, he might not want to give up.
Brian, what do you think?
Well, I.
On this, I, I don't like to get into variations like this.
Sure, no, I, I mean.
There is what, it is what's presented or it's not. There is, it is what's presented or it's not.
Agreed, and I mean, it's from, there's two perspectives, so I know that I'm going to answer your question. One is that, you know, limestone would certainly be a natural durable material that we would be okay with on a McComb Street building. On the flip side, as Commissioner Boggs referenced, and, you know, he's our in-house architect here, too, so we're adding a new material, an accessory building that we want to relate to the principal building, and by adding that new material, are we somehow diminishing the harmony between the two buildings?
Let me, given this discussion, let me throw out another thought here. If we were to approve this plan without approving the accessory building, okay, and they now want to build the accessory building, and they bring in exactly what they're going to put in, okay, separate from this plan.
Right.
How would that be handled? Would it be handled administratively, or would they have to come back?
Again, this would be one where we probably would confer with the officers of the commission to determine, I think I can, I think I can make a case that the ordinance would only require an administrative review. With that being said, this is on McComb Street, it's a site plan that you all would have just seen, and we always have the discretion to kick a sketch plan up to Planning Commission when we don't necessarily feel that we should be the decision-makers, so could go either way on that one, too. I'm giving some really wishy-washy answers.
Yeah, but no, it's ambiguous. I mean, we haven't run across this, and so this is a bit different for us.
Typically, an accessory building is not something we're going to bring before Planning Commission.
You could clarify this for us very quickly, Mr. Stanko. You could clarify this very quickly, simply by addressing Mr. Boggs' comments down here on the brick and making a decision right now about the brick or the siding.
Would it be acceptable if, instead of the Hardy siding on the accessory building, we use the same brick as the main building with that stone entrance?
I think that would help it more relate to the principal structure. Right now, other, like basically the siding on the principal structure, the siding uses more of an accent, it's used in that stair, on the stair tower. And then in this, you know, the majority of the building's covered in the siding, but it still relates. But if you, but if you change that to brick, and you're still introducing the small amount of stone, I think it would relate well.
I think that better answer.
You should go that way.
I would think at least not on the...
Different costs.
What do you think, Brian?
I agree with my partner over here.
Jay, what do you think?
Yeah, I, that's what I'm kind of struggling with on the accessory structure, is that Hardy board is, you know, an accent piece on the principal building and becomes the main, and we introduce something else as the accent, and I wasn't very comfortable with that. I'd at least like to see on the south, on the southern elevation, I don't know if that's something that can be, can be mixed, but, you know, that view from McComb Street, I think, would look much better with brick on there, with the stone.
Are you talking about four sides or one side? What side are you talking about? Four sides, all the way around?
Yeah, I think it's great.
Steve, what do you think about this?
So I don't agree with this, and here's why, in my principle for saying I don't agree. I believe that the applicant, the expert he has with him, this process is well-defined, that the final product that we are to review and approve is supposed to come before us, drawings and all. And for me, I find it tough to approve concepts and what brick would look like. They may show you a picture of this with brick, and we say this is the worst in the world. For me, I would rather either approve or not approve what was presented tonight and keep that process and the integrity of that process. And if a change occurs that is an administrative change, then so be it. But in my opinion, the structure I see before me is what's up for vote, from my standpoint.
Okay, let's hear from Jim.
As far as everything that I understand, the structure, it's going to be all brick now, it's going to have the stone accent with a shingle roof. That's my understanding, so I'm fine with that, I can understand that. It's going to allow, the bricks can be the same that's on the main structure as well, so I'm all set.
Eric, your thoughts?
I think I'm with Steve on this one. I don't like to engineer someone's, someone's final look, I've got caught in that one time before, and I don't want to do it again. I think we could approve the site plan tonight, you know, without the accessory building, and then that accessory building could go to a regular administrative review, just like most accessory buildings would go on MSD, and if there's a question there, then the planning, planners can always kick it back up here. So I think that's the way I would like to proceed.
Okay, well, we have a variety of opinions, so let's, at this point, I think, unless there are questions, any further questions, let's entertain a motion and see what comes out of it. Who'd like to make a motion, please, regarding this application?
So I'd like to move that we approve the site plan as submitted, that with the, you know, with the stipulations that John had already said regarding the engineering, et cetera, that the, that we'd expect that it would have an accessory building, but that goes through an administrative review. And if there's issues at the administrative review, then it would come back here.
Okay, we have a motion, is there support?
Support.
We have support from Steve, is there additional discussion?
Yeah, if I could just make sure I understand what the implications of that motion would be from Brian. You know, I think, I share the discomfort, frankly, with us trying to figure this out. It's not for us to help determine how this should look. At the same time, you know, if we were meeting every two weeks, or a month even, it'd be very easy for us to just kick this back, and they can bring it back and go through an iterative process. In light of the fact that our meeting schedule is somewhat irregular, you know, we step outside of that sometimes and do this, so trying to balance the two principles of being accommodating to applicants while not being the engineers ourselves, or the architects ourselves, try to make sure I understand what the implications of this would be. So Brian, if that were the case, and they were to come this week with drawings that showed brick, for example, what would be your, what would be your step?
We do, by ordinance, we would review it administratively. However, like I said, I would, because it's tied to a site plan that you've seen recently, I would probably send an email to the officers of the commission, get your quick feedback, and see if there's an interest in bringing this back before the full commission, or if you're okay to just move forward.
And I would assume it would be the same answer if they came in with a drawing that looks like what we see on the screen here.
Correct, yep. Yeah, by, like I said, by ordinance, there's no question we can do it administratively, but we always have, and occasionally use the discretion to take administrative task and kind of kick it up a level to give it a little extra scrutiny to make sure the commission's okay with it. You know, don't want to ever put myself or staff in a position where we've just upset the Planning Commission by making decisions that you all were not happy with. So we do our best to make sure that doesn't happen.
Yeah, I think with that understanding, I would support the motion.
Additional discussion, additional questions? Calling, I'll call the question, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All aye down here?
Everybody okay? Okay, the answer is all aye. So you have your approval as we stipulated. Make your final plans, please, to, on that building, to Brian, and we'll get that part of it wrapped up and proceed with the rest of your county and engineering and fire approval, and you'll be good to go.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That was an excellent discussion. Guys, thank you. Okay, we're now to the infamous Chairs Report.
Longest Chairs Report ever had.
Yes, I know. Okay, Brian, let's kind of run through these first.
Absolutely. I'll keep it as, I'll keep it as brief as possible, Mr. Chair. So just a handful of updates, because obviously it's been a while since we met. As you'll note, the meeting, the meeting minutes you approved tonight were from September, so we haven't seen each other in a while, so we've had a handful of things going on. So the first, and probably the most important, at least in my eyes, are, we do have two site plan submittals that are in, currently being reviewed at some level. We have one in that's in for a second review already, we have another that's gone out for revisions, hopefully from the petitioner. And the first is tied to another pre-app we had last spring, and that was for the gas station at the corner of Marion and McComb. You remember, they were going to sort of redevelop the building, and then they wanted to incorporate the drive-through coffee shop, which clearly had a number of hurdles from a zoning perspective, at least. So the revised drawings we got in have eliminated the drive-through component. So the project as it currently stands is a new convenience store, still elimination of the auto repair, auto service base, which I view as a positive, and I think you all did at pre-app, and a small takeout-only coffee shop. So it would have a very small counter, it probably was blend into the convenience store, quite frankly, but no drive-through, because the drive-through was really, it was, it was going to be difficult to incorporate that into that small of a site at that busy of an intersection on a corner lot. So I do think they're making progress. We did send back a review letter already with a number of items that still need to be clarified or corrected. So I did not believe it was ready for your review at this particular time, but my hope would be that the next time you meet, we'll have a site plan that's clean enough that you all can take a shot at it.
Okay, how about island shops, what's going on?
Island shops, this is another one that submitted. This is, this is one that could theoretically, we get caught in the gray zone of discretion. It could theoretically be a, an administrative sketch plan review, it's a modification to their existing parking lot. However, given the scope of it, I feel that it's probably something we'll kick up to the Planning Commission. What they're proposing at this time does not meet at least two ordinance standards and would require some modification to landscaping from the commission, so I felt more comfortable that this is, this is going to be something that Planning Commission would review if they continue to pursue it. What they're looking to do is take the front, essentially the front green belt that's there now, which is somewhat limited, but right now, there's a front green belt, a drive aisle, and a one-sided parking lot towards the buildings. I apologize for talking with my hands, but I think you're familiar with the site. Essentially, the plan right now is to eliminate almost the entirety of that green belt for a new row of six or seven parking spaces across the front of that site. It does not meet setback requirements, it's parking front yard, which is prohibited by your ordinance, and it's also the elimination of a required green belt depth and planting. So there's some modification issues there as well. So I have not yet heard back from them, we did issue that, we issued a letter for that one as well, noting all of the complications. So that'd be one where we'll kind of just have to wait and see what they do and what they bring back to us. Ultimately, if they do pursue it in the manner that's been shown, I would predict that it will be something that'll have to go before both Planning Commission and Zoning Board of Appeals.
Understood. Project updates?
Yes, the fun ones. So these are otherwise known as the, Brian has been in over his head for a few months and hasn't gotten around to doing everything he promised you, so...
But you got help?
I do, now.
Look at him, he's so happy.
I know, so... So the short and sweet on both of these is that I would expect to have the items ready for presentation to you whenever our next meeting is, now that I do have some help. I have an extra set of hands, I have a couple extra sets of hands. I'm still short a couple, but we're getting there, so. Again, that's just the short of it. Unfortunately, especially the baby study, the young man I had doing all of the GIS work on that left our office several months ago, and so that one I have to get picked back up by a new GIS person, but Josh, Josh just happens to know GIS, so...
Did we send out the letters to the other commissions regarding master plan?
Yeah, that's, we do need to follow up on that one as well, so that'll be...
The letters went out?
Yeah, I'll double-check with Lori, but I believe they did, and we'll push to make sure we get some feedback on that, even if we need to, you know, make some follow-up phone calls, whatever it takes, we'll make sure we get that wrapped up for you as well.
Okay, informational items?
Yes, more fun stuff. I don't know, did Lori put in your packet the agreement letter? She did.
Yes.
So this is one that came across a handful of our desks, and we just wanted to put on here so the commission was aware. This is actually the first time I've seen or received a copy of this, but the agricultural component of Westcroft Gardens, the growing component, if you will, has been under an agreement with the state of Michigan under, it's basically preserved as open space or ag land, and that is something that actually goes back several years. And what we received was an updated agreement between, a copy of an updated agreement between Westcroft Gardens and the state of Michigan to that effect. This is really the first time I've actually seen that document. Dale was aware that they had such an agreement, but this is the first time it's ever come across my desk, so we wanted to include that for your information. It really shouldn't have much of an impact on anything, but the reality is that if they, if they decided to do something with that property in terms of, that was ag-related and that was related to, again, the quote-unquote "farm" aspect of that site, then we would have to, we'd have to work with them, because they, that may provide them some zoning exceptions that they would not otherwise have, because they are essentially preserved and protected as ag land. But with that being said, that doesn't mean it opens up the door for them to do anything either. So they can't just do whatever they want, nor can they, can take what is now a low-intensity growing type of ag use and convert that into, you know, say, the raising of hogs or cattle or something to that effect. So I don't think you'll see any major changes over there, this is just the reiteration of an agreement that existed for many years, but I think it was worth bringing up as an informational item.
I sort of presume that it was also due to assessment, tax assessment?
Yes.
So it's assessed as ag land as opposed to...
That's correct.
A potential subdivision, which leaves a huge difference.
Yep. Well, and that's, and from that angle, it would, on the area, the land that is covered by that agreement, it would preclude them from developing the land as well. So essentially, it's protected as open-spaceland, if you will, for the time being, at least through expiration of that agreement, and my guess is that that probably would continue into the future.
Okay, and the cell tower?
Yep, last one is cell tower on, this was the one on, I already forgot now, it's McComb Street or is it Ridian? It was the McComb Street one. So there was a, a request, this was township-owned land, the cell tower company actually leases the land from the township, and they simply had a request in for new equipment, in this case, it was a generator. Backup generators are becoming more and more popular and/or necessary for cell tower sites. And I think this one came up really for a couple of reasons. One, because the township owns the land, so we needed a review for consistency with the lease agreement. And two, because anytime we install a generator, we want to make sure that it's noise rating and its location are not going to be something that would be harmful to neighboring properties. I spoke with Dale today, there's been communication back and forth with the applicant, and the township is in the process of getting more information. So we do know that the generator will simply go in the existing equipment yard, so there's the tower itself, and then there's all the mechanical equipment within the fenced area. The generator will be located in that very same area, and I believe that the petitioner was supposed to provide us with decibel ratings at certain increments so that we could ensure that we weren't going to have any major issues with noise generation from it. And Dale seemed to feel pretty comfortable, but I don't want to put him on the spot, he's not here, but, you know, my conversation with him seemed positive, and when I looked at it, you know, short of the fact that the township owns the land, technically adding new ground-mounted equipment within a tower site is actually exempted from plan review by the statute anyway, so it wasn't anything that was going to require site plan review, but it will require issuance of permits. So some additional information was needed, and they will have to obtain the necessary permits, the building department, before they can install that.
Very good. I'd just like to have you share your comments that you and I, you and I talked about regarding marijuana shops. You know, those of you who follow the news in Detroit, you know, they've had a mass proliferation of pot shops, basically, and the city council is trying to set zoning regulations that preclude these things being so numerous and in locations where they simply don't fit. I was asking Brian, you know, our protection in the zoning ordinance was simply to say, "Look, we'll not approve any use which doesn't meet federal standards."
Correct.
And I guess that was ruled unconstitutional or something?
That's correct. One of the...
It was believable to me.
One of the, there've been a number of cases the last few years, and a number of proposed amendments to that legislation, some of which were really going to provide us with a lot of direction at the local level, and unfortunately, none of the amendments have come to fruition yet. So the most recent version I saw, I think it may have gotten through one step, and we were hoping that it might actually be adopted and become effective at some point, because it did provide us with a lot more direction than the current article marijuana legislation does. does. But that hasn't happened yet, so...
Does the city of Detroit operate under different standards than the township as far as being able to regulate? Because they're obviously trying.
Yeah, no, we, there, there, there definitely would be some things we could do. It's a, it becomes a, again, it's, it's a really, it's a tricky issue because it's so heavily tied to legal involvement. And it is, on some level, it is protected by state legislation. So I'm not going to tell you that there's nothing you can do because I think there is something we can do. I'm not sure exactly what form that takes as of this particular moment. I do think it's something we want to initiate a conversation with Mr. Sordi on probably sooner rather than later.
Yes. I would, I would like you to do that, please.
Sure.
And at the next meeting, come back with some ideas or some thoughts about what we can or can't do with that. And then it'll be up to, the planning commission will then have the discretion to decide if they want to or if they don't want to.
Absolutely. Yeah, there, there are a number of options and certainly we can present you with some of the different scenarios that other communities have, have worked with that have either, and this is where I need to really speak with Tom, is to see whether they've been upheld or they just haven't challenged yet. And I want to make sure that, you know, that we're putting you guys in the right position to, to get what you want out of it without going so far so as to violate anybody's rights, obviously.
That's the place to be. Thank you, sir. That's the Chairs Report. Let's talk about the next meeting date. Brian, based on the status of the recent plan submittals, what would you think would be an appropriate target?
If, if both parties can get everything together, there could be cause to have a meeting as soon as next month. Looking at the calendar, you know, I might suggest we're at the first Monday of March. If we pushed it to like the third Monday in April, that's, you know, that's, that's a month and a half. That probably would work. If, if not, we could certainly look at early May as well as an alternative. Although, April 18 and May 2 would be...
I'll tell you what, let's, let's be certain, May 2. That'll give you time to take care of these, these two...
Thank you.